Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Select meeting on May 28. It is 7:00 PM exactly. And keeping with our agenda, we have a 1/12 budget review and discussion. Last night, and I think I'll do it again tonight, to let the residents know that the Select Board is going through each 1/12 budget for every town, department, committee, and so forth. And we will be done this week with it. And then it goes to the Finance Committee for their review for a week. And then after that, we will put together an application and submit it to the Department of Revenue in the hopes that it will be approved for the Town of Holliston, so that we will have funds for the month of July. As of this date, we do not know. We don't have any information about the state's allowance for contributions for FY21. And so that's why we have delayed town meeting, because it's really hard to put together a budget without having that information. It's a big part of a community's budget. So that's what we've been working on. For those of you who are just starting to join us tonight, that's the process. And to clean up some things from yesterday, under review on our agenda, the Board of Health and the assessors. There were some questions about an accurate number for a 1/12 budget for the Board of Health, and there was also some issues with the assessors' budget. So, given that, we will start off each subject matter with asking Tina Heim, the Board's clerk of the Board of Select, if she has remarks or questions. And then we will ask the Vice Chairman of the Board of Select, John Cronin, for remarks or questions. And then I will speak. And then we will ask folks from the conference call if they have questions or remarks. So that's how we will do it, as we always do. So, Board of Health, Mrs. Heim. We had some issues last night with that budget. I don't see our town accountant on the conference call. Oh, there she is. Okay. So Sharon, have you looked at the Board of Health budget? And made a rec-- and do you have a--
I did look at it. I knew you had questions for Scott, so when I sent it to you this afternoon, you know, this is not going to be the final version, because I didn't know what changes would actually be made to the Board of Health budget this evening.
Is Scott on the conference call? Scott? Can you--
Yes, because I am.
Can you help out with Sharon's question?
Yeah, please. Based on last night's discussion, and having gone now to the Department of Revenue guidelines, and having a better understanding of what you were looking for in the spreadsheet for this evening, I submitted a new spreadsheet with the updated numbers, being the column of COVID-21, 2021, which is basically our zero budget. And then, of course, the 1/12 division right next to it, as we were discussing last night, as we was doing quick math, a zero budget down for total budget would be 148, 485. And then dividing that out in salaries would be 11,938, 1,340 for the services needed just to get us through July. If we have to go over for additional testing for the pond, we'll take and deal with that as we come.
Having a hard time.
And then we minimized the other items as close to the 1/12 budget as we can to get us through July.
Okay. We just want to make sure that the numbers given are concurred with the town accountant, and that they're accurate before we send it off to the Finance Committee.
Yep, understood.
So Sharon--
So what does he have for a bottom line for his zero budget?
148, 485.
148, 485?
Yep.
Okay.
And you said that it would be $1,340?
$13,378 for a 1/12 budget for July.
$13,700 and what?
$13,378 for the month of July.
Okay, all right. You didn't come in too clearly a couple times, so we're just trying to make sure--
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sharon, Tina, do you have any questions?
Well, so Scott, last night you were saying something about you had some July expenses that needed to be paid, that won't then be every other month after that.
Well, right now, what we did was sharpen the pencil and looked at exactly what was going to take to test the water, and just sharpened it up. And again, if we come into something that has to come up with a visiting nurse that's not COVID, we'll then take in, we'll worry about it. It's probably something that could be billed off into the next month's budget.
Because what I see--
So if something comes up--
Go ahead, sorry.
So we were holding it up in the visiting nurse item and the professional services item to cover, you know, anything, but we reduced those down even further to the bare minimum to get us through July, and we'll take and go from there.
Okay, so I see the 1/12 that you're requesting for July is $13,378. So it kind of makes sense what you're saying, then, because when I multiply that by 12, it's 12,000 over your 0% budget guideline or your 0% budget. So I get 160, 536 if I take your 1/12 and make it a full year. So what I'm assuming here, based on your comments, is that that difference is those July expenses.
Right.
Okay. That was going to be my question as well.
Okay. John, questions?
Good evening, Scott. Your base FY20 budget was 152,650. If you were to do a 0% budget, can you tell me how you went down to 148, 485, please?
I took in, in order to make my department work the most efficiently, we decide, in discussion with the board, it would be best that I reduce my work hours by, from 40 hours a week to 38 hours a week, then we're not laying anybody off. So my salary, my salary is going from 86 in FY20 to an 83, 83.6, based on a 38-hour week, not a 40-hour week. So that way, we're not cutting any clerical, and we'll be able to still maximize dealing with public health.
And you were trying to get to the 0% budget.
And yeah, there's no sense cutting a clerk four hours when it would only make more work--
For you.
Doing it any other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would make more work for me, cutting someone like Anne, at least, four hours than me cutting myself two hours. I can work a little bit harder. I still have time to make it--
Scott, if you don't mind, I might need Sharon's assistance with the math, because I don't understand how you go from 152,650 last fiscal year--
Yeah.
--and with 0% growth, drop it $4,000. Why the reduction? Am I missing something? Sharon, help me--
Well, again, I also took in, took some money out of the inspector's salaries, because we're going to have fewer other inspections as a result of restaurants being closed. So I took another, you know, I took another hit in that line item up there to try and get it to what we need at the bare minimum.
Right, but--
Sharon, if I could ask for your assistance?
So you've got three in my salary--
Yeah, so but--
You've got another 1,000 that was removed out of inspector's salaries.
Okay.
And you took, and the board, of course, went down to zero for their statement.
Okay, Scott?
Yep.
So your budget can't, at 0%, your budget can be 152,650?
Yep.
In July, I mean, I know you would put in that extra 1,800 bucks, but in July, that can't be part of your budget, because it's new, and that's not allowed in the July budget.
Right, that 1,800 meeting clerical is not in the COVID budget.
Okay.
That was what we requested, but it's not in that zero line item.
Okay. So this is why I don't understand--
So in other words, we lost, so we lost 3,000 in my salary, 1,000 out of the inspectional services, and what would be 1,800 that was requested was not included in the line item to get to what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, okay. But if I just take the $1,800 out of your budget, you have a bottom line of 153, 887. You need to get to 152, 650. It's only 1,200 bucks.
If you want to put more money in it--
Yeah, I mean, I think it's crazy that you're cutting your salary where we can probably, I mean, I can go through this and shave a little here and a little there and get you to that without you giving up two hours of work. That seems crazy.
I concur with Sharon completely, Scott. You're the Health Director for the town during the middle of a pandemic. I'm surprised your board supported that motion, unless it was voluntary. Unless it was voluntary.
Well, that was what I had put forth to them, not to cut, in order not to cut any clericals.
Well, I think there must have been a misunderstanding of what that budget had to be. As Sharon indicated, your FY20 base is 152, 650. And as we said last night--
650.
That's your 0% budget in for FY21. The only thing we wanted to add into that was the annualization of your salary. That was it. So then we take 1/12 of that.
If I, I mean, I can take a little bit out of your office supplies and a little bit out of your professional services and get you to 152, 650 very easily without touching your salary.
Yeah, because the important-- The important thing here, Scott, is it has to be at 0% FY20, or a little more, not less. So we do have to stick with the criteria here.
Okay, so 152, 650 minus the 148, 485, and we put that into the salary or wherever it needs to be. But again, I was looking at this being the bare bones item to survive, but that worked. I'm going to do quick math here for you.
Yeah, I can, I can play with this and give you--
Sharon, do you happen to know what the annualized salary for the Health Director is?
Yep. It's $88,041.
So his clerical salaries went up a little bit. Inspectors are with the, I see what you, so you're thinking maybe trimming what effectively is a--
Clerical salaries should not have gone up, because we had to use last year's. His clerical salaries actually went down 200 bucks. Because we're not putting the clerk in the clerical salaries.
If we were to load his annualized salary with the adjusted clerical salaries and any other means to get down to a 0% budget with an annualized increase for him, what would that number be? And if you want to take a time--
Well, the difference of the two is the $4,406 between the two salaries of 80,041 and the 80--
Mr. Moles, if I could interrupt you for just a brief second, I'd like the accountant to do the work, if you don't mind, so that we can adjust.
No, thank you.
And at this point, if Sharon needs a couple of seconds, and we can move on, perhaps to the next budget and discuss it, come back and look at what Sharon recommends for a base Board of Health budget, Mr. Chairman.
That sounds like a plan.
Because I don't think we're far from where we need to be, Scott. I think we need to tweak something, but I want to clear up something real quickly. You indicated your willingness to reduce your hours to accommodate a lower salary, and I think that's normal. But I want to be clear, that was a, you were doing that for that purpose, is not because you wish to work less. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so my personal opinion, you know, you don't work for me, but if I was on the Board of Health, and I have a pandemic going on, I want my Board of Health Director full time. That's just me, so--
But I also, we also have two part-time staff that, you know, it's tough to add hours to without going over--
No, I understand, but we're here to achieve a balance, to keep the buses running on time in July. The real business of finishing the rest of the budget and balancing it will go to the Finance Committee. I just consciously can't support reducing a budget for July that supports reduced hours for you. I think that's going backwards. And I do think--
All right, thank you.
Once the accountant gives us a fresh number here, we're close to where we need to be, Mr. Chairman. Sharon, you just need a few minutes to give us that number, maybe?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Yep, almost done.
All right.
All right, let's just, let's--
Let's move to the next--
Let's move to the assessors. That was another question for last night. I think Tina, you had questions about the assessors' budget last night, if I recall.
I'm looking for, we did not get an update.
We didn't get an update? Well, we got to wait for Sharon to--
Okay, so Board of Health, Scott, if I reduce your professional services from 2,200 bucks to 1,200, and reduce your office supplies from 800 to basically 560, all your salaries will stay where they need to be, and you will be at 152, 650. So that's keeping your $300 reduction you already did for professional development in the 480 you took out of, you know, so it's keeping reductions that you already had there. But if I do those two additional ones, your salary stays intact, and both of your clericals stay intact.
Okay. And what is the 1/12?
Well, I think Mr. Moles indicated he'd already calculated it to be 13,378. It's inclusive of some July expenses--
Is what he needs, right.
Is that correct, Scott?
52.
Scott, you're muted.
Oh, we can't hear him.
Scott, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There you go. No, that should go up as 152--
650. I'll keep the 13,000 for July, correct?
Yep.
Okay. 378 for July, but his bottom line zero budget will be 152, 650.
I like it.
All right, well, I move to accept, then, a 1/12 budget for the Health Department of $13,378.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Scott, thank you.
Yep, thank you again, and I'm glad I can understand it a little bit better than I did yesterday.
Well, it's certainly different this year, so don't worry about it, Scott. We're all here to work together and to make sure things are accurate, so no problem.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, no, thank you, thank you.
Sharon, the assessors' budget, there was--
I have it.
I think Tina has some information. Why don't you share it with us?
Oh, I do not, no. I guess, overreached there. I do not have more information. It was just that, hold on, memory's fading here.
232, 960.
Right.
And it includes 97, 645 in Ms. Pierce's salary.
Sharon, do you want to go over assessors' budget?
So a 0% budget for them was 232, 960.
Agreed.
Okay, that's what Tina has.
So she had, like, two budgets. She had that, which was 0%, and then she also had one, which was 235, 290. So a couple thousand dollars more.
Well, that difference, I think, was reflective of some services that Mary Greendale was describing that are really beyond what I think we're here to do.
Okay.
If we're going to achieve the--
Yeah.
I mean, unless those expenses, to your knowledge, need to occur in July. I don't recall hearing that, Sharon?
No, I don't think--
From the assessors?
No, I mean, what she needs to do, I think she needs to do, so that reserve fund, I think Kathy really needs to have for this year. The problem is, it's a state mandate, and she's got to, you know, pay for it next year, which is what I do not think they obviously anticipated. So next year, they'll be tight, probably, hoping that the state actually changes their mind on that before the end of--
But do you recall if there are any obligations for that state mandate in July?
I don't think it has to happen in July. I think it's an annual thing.
Right.
So when Kathy's going through and revaluing everything, at some point, this, those two utilities have to be revalued, and that costs them, you know, 2,000 bucks a pop--
Okay.
--at the moment. I don't think Kathy is comfortable doing it, which is why they were having this other firm do it. I think Mary Greendale was hoping, and even maybe in next fiscal year, that Kathy would get comfortable with the process and be able to do it herself, so they wouldn't have to pay for it. But they were also hoping the state would change the mandate, you know--
Right.
Yeah.
An unfunded mandate that they're just dropping on people.
Okay.
So tonight, we're looking at a 1/12 budget for July for the Board of Assessors for $19,413.33, and that is 1/12 of what they have projected. It's not only 1/12 of their 20 budget, but it's 1/12 of what they're projecting for 2021. So I move to accept the 1/12 budget for the assessors of 19,000. We're rounding up, right? $13.
Yep, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, unless there's, Sharon, is there anything that was left over from last night, other than Board of Health and assessors, that we need to address?
I think Board of Health and assessors were the only ones I had--
That's what I have, but--
I have not, I have, the only selectman's budget that I have seen was the original one that was submitted in the normal budget process. I don't know if you guys--
Yeah, that, we have that under Item 2 on the agenda to discuss, along with a few others.
Okay, that would be, I think that is my only other one that I don't have.
Perfect. Everyone else concurs?
I don't budget on--
Economic Development still undone? If I'm not mistaken?
Was Economic Development still undone?
Well, I kept Economic Development level funded from last year. Again, that's, you know, it's probably not going to be salaries. It's probably, so whatever's in the salary line may end up being contracted services if they're going to have to hire somebody to do this. I guess that remains to be seen, but going forward, I just kept the budget level funded.
Okay.
Budget there.
And--
Yeah, it remains to be seen if it's, they hire a part-time person, or if they hire some contracted person to--
Yeah, to take over Karen's place, Karen Sherman's.
Yeah.
So Sharon, just a quick question. So the appropriate amount for FY20 was 12,673, but what we have here for the 1/12 is, if you, it's a little bit higher. If you took the 12,000 divided by 12, you get 1,056. So we've got 1,172.
You're right, it is. That's my mistake. I missed that.
Okay.
I thought I went through all of these today.
No worries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tina, I was focusing on something else. Could you repeat what you just said?
Sure, so we're just, Sharon's correcting the 1/12 for the Economic Development budget to be, for July, 1,156, so down about $120.
Against an appropriation of how much?
12,673.
Where did that number come from?
Yeah.
Where are you getting 12,673?
That was what was appropriated in FY, for FY20? So that's a good--
I have 14,67.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I had in there. Let me look.
So Sharon, I would be wondering if that difference there, that 2,000 or $1,900 difference reflects the salary adjustment for the town planner?
What I'm checking.
Okay. Because then I think this conversation changes a little bit, based on the comments of the town planner.
Okay, you are right. So 14,000, all right, so that's, there's a reason why it's that. So 14,67 is what the adjusted 20 budget was. Yeah, for the salaries that were given in '20. So 14,67 is the zero budget, not the 12,67.
And--
It becomes 11,72.
11,72, Sharon?
That's what she has here, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We should be good to go, then, huh? Do we have a motion?
I still have the question, though, of if the town planner is not performing the clerical duties for this committee, why are we paying whomever takes that position the town planner's salary?
Well, you probably wouldn't be paying her hourly salary, I wouldn't imagine, but depending on if you, this is the question, on depending on if you get a person as an employee, or if you end up doing--
Contracted.
Contracted services, contracted services, you know, somebody's hourly contracted rate is usually higher than somebody's--
Right, okay.
And we need to be at 0%--
Hourly rate, if they're an employee.
Okay, so move to accept the Economic Development Committee's 1/12 budget of $1,172.
Do we have a second?
A second with a comment.
Go ahead.
Sharon, do you happen to understand that the-- Sharon, do you happen to understand that the 1/12 budget exercise on the other end, here's the question. Once we put the request into the Department of Revenue,
Yep.
They'll turn around and certify the line items that we're voting on, the 1/12 budget line items for the various departments. That money, if you will, I think, becomes a spending amount, but it's not by category, is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, I actually tried to go online the other day, because there's a, there's a form online that I have to fill out. And they are, they are still making it, and it's not available until June 1st, so I have not seen the form. I'm, it was my understanding in reading the guidelines, that it's going to be just by department, that it does not have to be a breakdown for, you know, salaries and expenses, that kind of thing. I'm thinking it's just by department, but I've not seen the form yet, so I would know that next week.
In effect, it would be like every department is now the school department. All your money is in one approved line, and you get to spend it, as long as it fits within that 1/12 budget. So, if we do end up hiring a contracted individual in July to fulfill those services, the money doesn't have to be under personal services.
Right.
We're not doing it that way, Sharon can take whatever the 1/12 is and say, "Okay, contractor, go."
Okay.
The money's there, so that's how I understand it, so you have my second, Mr. Chairman.
That's my understanding, and like I said, once they finish the form and it's actually online, I can confirm that.
Okay, I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, is there anyone from the audience that has any questions of item one on our agenda, of the three budgets we've just talked about? For our town accountant, she can, I'm sure, answer them. Anyone at all? Okay. Item two on the agenda is tonight's budget reviews. We have the Select Board budget, and that would be you, Jeff.
Yep, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have an approved budget for FY '20 of three hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. The two variables in this budget is, under the professional services category, we've built in twenty thousand dollars additional expending to address the environmental concerns at Nine Green Street.
Okay.
The second issue is that with the hiring of a new town administrator, there's an additional twenty thousand dollars built into the town administrator's salary line item. So, it will go from, at the moment, one hundred and thirty thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand.
Sharon, did you already put an adjustment in for the new town administrator's salary?
Aye. Let me see what I've got in here. Um, yeah. I had put in...
I just want to make sure that we're not adding twenty thousand in that doesn't need to be added in there.
Yeah. Yeah, what you're seeing on there, I did not change anything on that budget, so that, this is going back to when I took one twelve of the three oh one eight fifty-five, I think I added in, added in fifty thousand dollars or something like that to that, because John had asked me to add some additional money.
We need to be able to...
Right, wrong, or otherwise.
Yeah. So...
I can eat, change it whenever you want me to, I was just waiting for your vote.
So, the three oh one eighty-five covers everything except for the environmental issue? Is, am I correct in that?
No, as I said, the current appropriation is three hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. There are two variables in that budget. One is the, an addition of twenty thousand dollars for the environmental concerns that, under the professional services line item, for Nine Green Street.
But you're not asking for twenty thousand more than the three oh one eighty-five?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's my question.
And that obligation has to be met in July, Jeff, right?
Well, I mean, the money won't be expended until sometime, probably this fall, for the environmental consultant to do their work, their site assessment.
Then I don't think we'd put it in.
Then I don't, yeah, then I don't think we'd put it in, Jeff.
That'll go to the finance, I'm sorry, Tina, that would go to the Finance Committee's buildup for the remainder of the year.
Yeah.
If you have an obligation in July that is non-discretionary, then, you know, like Scott Moles and Mark Frank was describing, I think we build in the proportional amount then, but the Green Street money is not needed until after July.
Well, there's one caveat to that, and I wish Scott were still on the call here, because the money that is in the twenty thousand, there's money in there for work that's been done, they're continuing on with their work, so in the...
Or some ameningering and...
In the LSP's mind, they've completed work that they're not billing us for until they continue the work, if that makes sense. So, they went over, Scott had a call, I was wishing he was here to clarify this, they went over on the work that they performed, but they're not billing it to us until they begin the new work moving forward, it's sort of a continuum of work that they're doing.
So, if we want them to start the work in July, then we need to have this money.
Yeah, I would not go so far as to say that we would not be having work done by this LSP in July.
Okay.
You know, of course, the other option is to have a separate article, and that's how I think I had framed it originally.
A second article.
A second article, just to fund twenty thousand dollars for LSP work at Nine Green Street.
Right.
And what I would say, too, is that all of this has been fairly time-sensitive in terms of addressing the compliance issues, so similar to what's going on on Woodland Street, if you don't have to delay, there's no good reason to delay.
Right, right.
So, I would just caution not including it in the 1/12. But I, this needs to come from Scott, Scott's the one who's had these conversations.
I'd like to get Ben Sparrow to weigh in on this and get your thoughts, Ben, are you available?
He has not been a part of the conversation with Nine Green Street.
Well, no, but he may have a thought on whether or not to include this or not in the 1/12 budget. Ben?
This is just me speaking here, we haven't had any conversations in the Finance Committee.
Oh, that's quite all right. What's your opinion?
But my opinion is, is that if we need to have the money appropriated for immediate work, then by all means. But I think the thing that we have to keep in mind is that we're gonna, we're planning to have a town meeting in July.
Right.
So, you know, if we're allocating the money, unless it's happening in those first couple of weeks, we're going to have an opportunity to put it into a budget if it needs to happen, and, you know, later on, I mean, you know, it's certainly something, you know, we'd want to examine if it needs to be expedited, if DEP's telling us it has to be done immediately, you know? But, you know, I, if there's, if there's a need to do it in immediately, like, you know, if, for example, Scott with the Board of Health, they have to work on the beaches in July, then certainly that money needs to be appropriated, but I don't, I haven't heard, you know, if it needs to be, I don't know the specifics of what has to be done, but if it's, the work is being done in September and does not need to be spent until September, then I don't think it needs to be in the 1/12.
Okay, and let me clarify my comments here, because I, thank you, Ben. I found Scott's email of today, so we have ninety days for the contract that we have with LEI, so funding a voted-at-town meeting is okay, because it's within the ninety days, so work can start after town meeting, so forgive me for that.
Okay, no, I just wanted to be accurate.
I'm going to take Scott's email as a clarification of the information I was looking for.
Now, in the event, for any reason, the July town meeting doesn't happen, we can look at fixing a 1/12 budget for the next one to accommodate any expenses that might come in in that window, but for this exercise, Tina, I feel like it's on the outside.
Fair enough, and I think even the ninety days from when the contract, this is an April 23rd correspondence, so I think that we're safe even with that.
Okay.
So, I think we're okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Sorry about that.
For your advice, and thank you, Tina, for finding that email. Sharon, so my other question to you is, with the three hundred and one thousand eighty-five, is the additional monies that...
So, do you, do you want me to add anything to that?
Well, I, did you already, did you already add it in? Is it already there, or no?
It, well, it's in there, I think, with other stuff. I think I started with what was submitted, which was not the zero percent, and, you know, threw money onto it, so I can start with the three oh one eight fifty-five, if you want me to throw the extra fifty on that, and then take a 1/12, I can do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, John.
Sharon, the document you sent today appears to have accomplished that, and maybe a little bit more. Three oh one eight fifty-five, 1/12, is twenty-nine thousand three twenty-one. If we were to add the fifty thousand dollars into the run over a twelve-month period, you add four thousand one sixty-seven to the twenty-five thousand, for a total of twenty-nine thousand three twenty-one. You had proposed thirty thousand five eighty, which is a little bit more.
Yep.
It would appear you did adjust for the town, the town administrator's increased salary and something else, but absent the Nine Green Street money, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, for 1/12 budget of twenty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars for this exercise.
Okay. Tina, do you concur?
Yep.
Okay.
I forgot to ask there.
I will take a motion then.
Yeah, I just made a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
And that's against a total of three fifty-one...
Three fifty-one.
Eight five five.
Yep. Eight five five, yep, that's what I was going to ask.
Okay. All set, Sharon?
I'm all set, I adjusted that, so we should be good.
All right, now we're on to liability.
Just one question on that, though, we're approving not only the 1/12, but do we also need to approve our amended budget to move forward?
It's just a reference.
Okay.
Because you'll find, as you've seen in some cases, the 1/12s are, if you add them over a twelve-month period, are more than that guideline, so, right?
And as far as approving a zero percent budget for Town Hall, that's not something we, doesn't that go directly to the Finance Committee when they do that?
That's under the public buildings budget.
Yeah, it's under the public building.
Yeah.
Because I'm not so sure that we've voted on Town Hall budget at zero percent.
Do you mean Selectman's budget?
That's what I mean, yeah.
Okay. Did we ever submit a budget to the Finance Committee?
Yes, yes.
You did?
Yes.
But did we vote on it?
And it was which number?
I don't recall voting on it.
It was the one percent guideline.
Back when we were in that game.
But we need to vote on a zero percent, don't we?
I thought you just did.
Does that...
Well, again, we're voting on the 1/12, Jeff.
Right.
But I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think what's at play here is the potential increase to the Selectman's budget in FY '21 to accommodate the new town administrator's salary.
Right.
The one percent budget did not do that.
Yeah, that's...
The Finance Committee Chairman has been advised that they should be carrying a separate number for potential negotiations, but to Mr. Aronian's point, I think our board has not really had a vote
Exactly.
On what that FY '20 number might be
Right.
With that number, it gets a little confusing because...
FY '21, right?
Yeah, because technically, we're going to negotiate with somebody.
Right.
Right.
You don't want to, you know, we're not...
But what I don't want approved is the wrong number for the Finance Committee, if we don't vote on it here...
Correct, so it's really the Finance Committee's decision on to carry the extra salary for the town administrator over here as sort of a reserve.
Okay.
You know, because we don't know how much the candidate...
We don't know yet, right.
Will be awarded in the contract. What we've done is shown, it could be as much as this, as a guideline in July.
Right.
And the Finance Committee, though, if I was there, I'd be saying, you know what, let's not put it into the Board of Select, the Select Board's budget now, because we don't know, we'll just, we'll just carry it here on our balance sheet. When you guys negotiate your contract, let us know what it is, and we'll put that into the warrant.
Okay. Do we need something formal to describe that to the Finance Committee, or will they just do that on their own?
Well, it's a good question, Jeff, I don't know if we've, I've spoke to Ken multiple times.
I know you have, but these things should be voted on.
I understand. You know, to the extent that you want to do that, I'm happy to make a motion...
Yeah, I think that would be...
That would help achieve the goal of setting aside a sum of money for the new town administrator's salary. They can decide when they do the omnibus where it goes.
Exactly.
But our intention of approving the 1/12 is to say, we will go here,
Right.
but for the other eleven months, it's on you to figure it out, so I'll make a motion to advise the Finance Committee that the Select Board FY '21 budget ought to consider up to fifty thousand dollars in additional salary for the new hire, funding to be determined by them, whether or not it's embedded in the line item or in a separate account.
Right, yeah, I think that's necessary, we're talking about...
We're taking a vote, this is what we would like, we pass that along through our channels to the Finance Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
And that goes to the 1/12 budget, it's a nice way to tie it up, Mr. Chairman.
And that's why, in this way, there's no confusion.
All clear?
Okay.
I think so.
Clear as mud?
Yep.
All right, next up is the liability budget, Sharon?
Sure.
Or Jeff?
Yep, FY '20 appropriated amount was two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. As you recall, this covers all of the town's insurance liability, automobile insurance, property insurance, public officials' liability insurance. The four-year average expense is two hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So, I'm recommending a level-funded budget at two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-two. We should be able to make it within that.
Jeff, does this include MIAA?
Yes.
Two seventy-five what?
Two seventy-five, five seventy-two.
And what does that come out to as a 1/12 budget?
We're actually going to make the full payment in July, is that correct, Sharon?
That is correct.
Okay, so that needs to be completely within the...
That's in your 1/12 budget, the entire amount.
Okay.
So, move to approve both the FY '21 and the 1/12 budget for July for liability insurance of two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Public Buildings. Jeff?
Okay, the Public Buildings account is, takes care of all of our maintenance for all of our public buildings, pretty much all of it, I mean, there are some other pockets that some departments carry in their budget for maintaining the buildings. The approved amount for FY '20 was two hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred dollars. The average four-year expense is two hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, I think, again, I think that we're well within that spend run, so I'm recommending a two hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred dollar budget, which is a level-funded budget.
Okay. And the 1/12 budget for that?
Twenty-three thousand five fifty.
Do we have a second?
Second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to just revisit the Selectman's budget for a moment.
Sure.
I have a question for Mr. Ritter.
Absolutely.
Jeff, when we did discuss the one percent guideline budget for the Select Board in FY '21, a hundred years ago, I do recall you indicated you wanted to support an increase in the budget due to legal services. If I recall correctly, it was a substantial amount, it was five figures. If I, if I understand correctly, what we just approved was basically a level-funded budget that accommodates an increased salary. How exposed are we in July to any additional legal expenses that a level budget wouldn't, wouldn't cover?
Well, I mean, you know, the town council budget is like snow and ice. You don't know what's gonna happen in July. We just don't know. Based on what I know, on looking over the horizon into July, I don't see any significant...
All right, let me ask you a direct question. Labor Council, Dan Brown, will likely be involved in the operations of bringing on a town administrator. Would those costs spike in July?
I don't see that happening. His, his expenses will come more under the labor contracts. I don't, I don't foresee any significant expenses really for him coming up with a contract. That's pretty boilerplate.
I think that's something we have to hang our hat on. In the event it does get out of line, we'll have to keep an eye on it.
Well, I think, didn't the Finance Committee make a recommendation, we put some money in the reserve fund transfer, I heard, or what was the recommendation?
I don't recall that.
For legal expenses? For legal?
I thought it was, I heard that there was a recommendation to have a little there for July.
Well, there was, I did see an email, but, I mean, that was just in general. I think they should boost up the reserve fund because we don't know what's happening.
That was for COVID.
That was just for COVID?
Yeah, we don't, we just don't know what's happening.
Well, the Finance Committee only make a recommendation anyway, and it seems to me that it might be a good idea to have a little money there for the month of July, should something come up.
On the reserve side?
On the reserve side, yes.
Of course, yeah. Thanks for allowing me to...
But I'm sure they'll, they'll think of that and discuss it amongst themselves.
Thanks for allowing me to go there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Solid waste, Jeff?
So, Mr. Chairman, the board had taken up this question on the solid waste budget back in January, and you reduced it at that point. And so the amount that, that was approved on May 6th of 2019 for the total solid waste budget was $1,287,851. The board voted on January 21st of 2020 to reduce that number to $1,222,851. So you're well within guideline. In fact, you're significantly less. And I think there's going to be further cost savings that's going to be realized in this budget. It's just that we don't know right now. Given the new recycling and solid waste collection system, we're tracking closely on a monthly basis the, the costs that are being charged to the town for, at Wheelabrader. The total tonnage is down pretty significantly.
Even with people staying home, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so far, so good. So, I mean, I mean, it's a major home run for the town in terms of cost savings.
Yeah, because it is a big cost.
It, it is a big cost, and, you know, the tonnage at, being recorded at Wheelabrader is down, so I feel real comfortable that just, you know, level-funded that budget.
And it's, it's too soon, really, to know exactly what the savings will be for a year.
No, you're gonna need a couple of years out.
We need, we need some time to really know, yeah. To see the trend. Yes, Gina?
So it won't be level-funded if it's...
I misspoke. It's not level-funded, right?
Uh, 1 million...
It's a reduced, reduced budget.
However, keeping with the 112 guideline, we've got a level funded. So Sharon will just, it'll just be adjusted when we move into...
What I have in the 112 is the 1222851 that Jeff spoke about.
What?
Will that meet the criteria, though, for the 112 budget?
I don't see...
That's not what you have on the file you sent us today, Sharon.
I see 101,904 for the 112 for July.
Correct.
At, at a, based off of a 1287.
101,904 times 12, it's the 122,851.
Okay.
Okay.
But the amount appropriated for FY '20 was $1,287,851.
287. And I'm not, every line has to be...
Not less than.
It can't be less than.
Is it line by line that can't be less than, or the, or the 112 budget in total? Because the 112 budget in total far, well, I won't say far exceeds, but in total definitely exceeds 1/12 of our annual town meeting budget for '20.
But we, yeah, we gotta do line by line, right? So I think you have to use...
I mean, I can buy it if you want me to.
I think you have to use 2020.
Yeah, make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve a 112 budget for the solid waste at $107,321. That's against the FY '20 appropriation of $1,287,851.
Can you repeat that, 1,200?
$1,287,851.
Okay.
Which is the FY '20 and zero base. The 107,321 becomes the 112. But to Mr. Ritter's point, when the Finance Committee gets their hands on this...
They'll, they'll do that.
They'll, they'll clean that up.
Yeah, they'll clean it up.
For the rest of the 11 months or so, okay?
But for our purposes, we really do have to stay within the criteria. Okay, thank you.
Second that motion?
And you second that?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Let's see here, one more. I got wastewater, Jeff.
You got two more, actually, wastewater and veterans.
Oh, that's right, we gotta do that.
So the wastewater treatment plant on Linden Street has an annual budget that was approved for FY '20 at $91,790. The, I was able to level fund this by reducing some of the, the maintenance costs on the plant because this is presumably going to be addressed under the capital expenditure article. Some of the maintenance expense is there.
Okay.
And so I think that for a, you know, a 0% increase or level-funded at $91,790 would be appropriate based on the assumption that the request under the, under the annual town meeting capital expenditure warrant item is approved.
Okay. And the 112 budget of that amount is what?
$7,649.17.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if you could just give me a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm trying to catch up, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, catch up.
Before we make the motion, Jeff, just a quick question. I think I heard you correctly. I just wanna make sure I did. I know that you had talked about repairs that were needed at the wastewater treatment plant. What you were just saying is that that's now a capital request?
There's a capital request in there.
So that's why it's not in the budget?
That's right.
I think originally it had been, so we've moved it into a capital request?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, just FYI, our facilities manager is all over that plant. And for the first time, by the way, because the plant has sort of been just operating.
Yeah.
And we've been just like putting Band-Aids on the pipes and the pumps and everything else. But our facilities manager has taken it upon himself to, you know, inventory the condition of the plant, which is a tremendous preventative maintenance step.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Do you have a motion right now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What is it?
It's for $7,649.17.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And the last one for tonight that I have is veterans services.
Right, so unfortunate, well, Veterans District, of course, is a four-town collaborative. It's run by a separate district, and each of the four towns has an agreement in place to provide services to the veterans community. The, the budget was approved by the Board of Directors of the Veterans District. And for Holliston's share, we're at $93,803.29, of which $50,000 is for benefits for veterans, which we are required to pay by law to the veterans of the community. We're seeing a sudden spike in claims for veterans services and veterans benefits. That accounts for a good portion of that, that increase. So the district assessment, which is a second piece of this budget, which covers the administrative, Holliston's portion of the administrative costs and for the staffing at 1750 Washington Street, comes down to $42,353. You really don't have a lot to say about this, in my view, because we've never, the Veterans District has never had any kind of dissension within the district. We can vote against the budget, of course, but, you know, the payback, return on investment for the services that are being provided are well worth the money that's being spent.
Absolutely. Sharon?
Sharon, a question for you, if I could?
Yep.
The, the base 0% is 68,653, correct?
It is. I didn't bother to put in the base. I put in the 21 request, which was a total of $93,803.
Yep.
Kind of like...
Yeah, I can see your, your 112 exceeded that. So the question is, is that because the July obligations will reach that level? Do we have to make payments on the 93?
Yeah, I mean, benefits alone, yeah. I mean, I don't, I honestly, I could put our whole assessment in, in July. I would actually, I would just wait for town meeting and then pay our assessment to the district, but, yeah, benefits alone are over, you know, three, four grand a month, closer to four now, actually. So, yeah, having 7,800 for July is not a bad thing.
I tend to agree with her. I think, I mean, it's, I don't wanna short the account. There's a difference of about $2,400, so I'll make a motion to approve the 112 budget for the veterans budget at $7,817.
Before I take that motion, do you have any questions, Tina?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right. We have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And just to clarify, that's against a $93,803 obligation, as Jeff indicated. It exceeds the 0% of 68,653, so we are making use of the not less than clause.
Okay.
To me, what Sharon indicated would probably be a spike in benefits for July.
Right, right, good point. Okay, we're gonna take a short five-minute break, and then we'll, we'll come back. Yes, thank you. Folks, we're back. It is 8:08. And after a short break, moving on in the agenda to capital request policy recommendation by the school committee. We recently, I think it was a few weeks ago, the school committee was on a conference call Zoom with us and had requested that we alter the capital request policy for our town. They felt that they should be excluded from the capital request policy. And they also wanted more time, if I recall. So we'll start with you, Tina, and your thoughts and...
Yeah, I mean, I have an update from the last time we talked about this as a board, which would be to say that the school committee did vote, and they unanimously voted to continue a request that the Select Board look at making recommendations. So they're unanimous by vote on, on the need to amend the capital request policy. They also sought advice, an opinion, from their legal counsel. They've received it informally, and so what I would suggest, if you are both agreeable to it, is that we defer this, this discussion tonight until we get the written opinion of the school's legal counsel. Number one, for us to review, and number two, so we have a document to reference for the discussion. Ann Louise Hanstead, it was her preference, she's the, I believe she's the vice chair of the school committee, but it was her preference that we wait for legal counsel to provide a written opinion for our review in order to continue the discussion. So again, I'd, I'd ask that we consider deferring the conversation until that's received. And her feeling was that would be within a week or two, that she could ask and receive it within a week or so.
Sharon?
That works for me. We've got a little bit of time before we have to tackle any capital-related... We've got a little bit of time before we have to tackle any capital-related requests for the warrant, so, and I do recall asking the school committee to take a vote and clean that up if they want. Sounds like they're making headway, so we'll wait for any legal opinion back. So, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think you both know I'm attending their, they're open meetings, but I'm on the subcommittee meetings weekly, and they're reviewing their capital requests every week, and there's no change from what I updated at the board last week, Monday, whenever that last was, feels like a million years ago, on the capital requests that they're thinking of presenting. So, it certainly won't be anything that we hadn't seen coming.
Right.
When they do make their capital requests. I agree with John.
Okay. So, we will just do that, and we don't need a motion. And you'll keep us informed?
Yes, yep.
Okay, great. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a discussion of open meeting law potential violation involving the Finance Committee on May 5th. I asked Mr. Tallerman to be on the conference call tonight, and I believe he had reviewed that meeting on the 5th, and I wanted to get your take on that, Mr. Tallerman.
Is he muted, Chris?
Yeah. He is unmuted.
Oh, you're muted.
I'm still muted.
You're still muted.
We can try now.
That's better.
There you are. Okay.
I'm good. So, John and I spoke briefly about this a little bit earlier, and he was able to provide a little bit more in the way of the background facts. The concern I had with respect to the, and the concern I still have with the Finance Committee's meeting is not with what they discussed in particular, or how they discussed it, it's the fact that it was a lengthy, robust, very specific conversation about something that wasn't specifically called out for on their agenda, and agendas are supposed to be fairly specific if it's a matter of substance. That said, the additional facts that John has brought to light indicate that they were discussing broadly warrant articles as they had been presented to them, and even though there wasn't a specific warrant article that addressed the main elements of that roughly fifteen, twenty-minute conversation, there was a tangential relationship to an item that was on the warrant regarding a transfer to pay for the department head salaries. I thought the conversation strayed a little bit beyond that, but it's also plausible that they would have a reasonable defense to an open meeting law complaint because there was some tangential relationship there. So, while I still have concerns with the depth of their discussion about something that wasn't specifically called out for on their agenda, the way that the division of open government works is that they generally give boards that haven't run afoul of the open meeting law too much to a little bit of benefit of the doubt if they stray a little bit.
Right.
So, it makes some sense to not pursue it so robustly, although I think the Finance Committee should be aware that if they want to engage in that depth of conversation, it always pays to overpost. And again, I'm placing a value judgment on their particular discussion, even though they may have been discussing some things that I said, but I do counsel clients generally to post more than you think you need to because the open meeting law is currently interpreted by the state, requires very, a substantial amount of specificity.
Right. Okay. And you had some remarks on a memo. I don't know if you have that in front of you, but there were some inaccuracies.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I'm happy to engage in that, if that's where you want to go. I accept concerns. It was obviously an issue that was hot that week with respect to the department head transfers and DOR's opinion, which supported the view that I've held for several months, and that the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board has held for several months. I felt the characterization of some of the facts and the history, again, not without commenting on the tone, because people can get as hot and bothered as they choose to, but some of the facts that were stated were not accurate, but again, that's, and you can, I'm not the fact police either, nor is the open meeting law the fact police. People don't have to tell the truth, per se. There's other things that make people accountable for not accurately recounting the facts. And, you know, with respect to that issue, too, I felt that even though I was reporting as my observations as to that meeting, it seems like where the issue is enough in the rearview mirror that it would be an academic dispute at this point.
Very good. Thank you, Jay. Mrs. Hyatt?
Right. And again, just for the record, Mark, you know, I think that there's been a lot discussed on levels of civility and decorum and discourse, and, you know, I always think that town officials should have a high level of decorum and civility, but I, you know, I'm always going to defer to you all. I would hope that everyone can get along pretty squarely and agree to disagree where they do, but have a good tone and still be able to shake hands, or have a beer, do whatever afterwards.
Right, right. Absolutely. Tina?
So, thank you for your comments, Jay, because I definitely came into tonight willing to support filing an open meeting law violation. I think the facts that John presented this week, and as you interpret them and describe them, it certainly alters my thinking on this, but my thinking was founded or based on just, you know, we've got decisions versus opinion here, in my view, and the tactics of the Finance Committee at times seem to be based on opinions that they hold, whereas I feel that the Select Board is taking an approach that's based on decisions that are found in a robust process, supported by the DOR, supported by town council. I feel like we're skirting open meeting law issues. We're certainly skirting civility and discourse issues frequently, but I feel like we're skirting open meeting law violations because the opinions of some are up against the decisions of others. So, I was prepared to support an open meeting law violation. I appreciate your comments, and I think moving forward is always the best approach, and so I would certainly step away from that support if you feel like it doesn't serve the purpose of improving, moving on from where we've been on this topic of department head salaries. I'm hearing you say that or suggest that, and I, again, appreciate your comments.
Yeah, you know, again, I can't make that final decision for you, but with the light of the new facts that have been presented, and they're not really new facts, they're just more fact-finding, and John's done a terrific job of putting together the package of all that stuff, then I think it makes it a closer question. Do I think that the Finance Committee may have gone too far and into too much depth on an issue that some of them were very passionate about? I do. One thing, and Jeff and I talked about this, gosh, going back a year or so ago, and it never came to pass for various reasons, is that periodically, we do open meeting law seminars. It's part of our services that we throw in with board members and the passage of time and some new cases. Maybe when we're allowed to all get in a room together again, that I come out and do an open meeting law seminar for board members of all boards and go through some of the do's and don'ts, and maybe it'll have the effect of, you know, kind of straightening, straightening things out a little bit in terms of what you can and can't do under the open meeting law.
Right. Okay. Thank you. John?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Look, we're all elected officials. We have responsibility to our oaths to the positions we hold. We volunteer, we give our time in the best interest of the town, and I firmly believe my colleagues on all committees and boards in the town uphold that. In the matter involving this situation, the, this is a well-beaten horse. The matter emerged last fall briefly, when this board informed the Finance Committee it was awarding contracts and salaries to department heads, and as a consequence of oversight, lack of oversight on some of the calculations that have been explained, i.e. the town planner, the calculations and the impact exceeded on an annualized basis the seventy-five thousand dollars that was appropriated by the town for FY '20. For FY '20, the amount of money that we assigned to the various department heads was dramatically lower than seventy-five thousand. This was explained to the Finance Committee multiple times last fall, especially as we approached the fall town meeting. There were heated discussions, some of them were on television, open session and so forth. They were upset with us for assigning a value that exceeded the seventy-five thousand, and our point was, look, we explained why that happened, okay? We're sorry. It's not a ton of money. I believe I used the word de minimis, and the scale was sixty-million-dollar budget, but practically speaking, the fiscal impact has really nothing to do with FY '20. Nothing.
Right.
It had to do with FY '21. Every year, this town engages in a brand-new budget process.
Right.
The town administrator, this board, and the Finance Committee engage in oversight, review, and ultimately votes against what they support. And the FY '21 process, which right now is a little kluge because of the circumstances, is where this matter has to re-enter, if you will, the public domain for votes. I don't understand, I still do not understand for the life of me, why members of the Finance Committee don't get that. I really don't. There's been a lot of discussion about it, and some of the rhetoric on May 5th, I found appalling. I really did. I was shocked with what I heard. I worked late Tuesday, I taped their meeting, I couldn't catch up with the real time, I couldn't join their meeting. I didn't know they were going to be talking about this. If I'd known, I would have made my schedule available, I would have been on the call, like I see some members of their committee is on ours right now, to participate. I didn't have that chance. I didn't know they were going to bring this up. But what I did know was that earlier that day, as Jay Tallerman just noted, the town received good news. And the good news was, as we thought all along, the action of addressing the FY '20 budgets was done administratively. It was done legally. It was done properly. It was done the way we had planned it when we withdrew the article in the fall. It was no attempt to avoid public discussion about this. I have been on this board now a year and a half, I haven't talked about anything else as much as this. There's a lot in the public domain. I'm accountable to that. You're accountable. Tina's accountable. They're accountable. I can't wait for the floor discussion about this, if there is one. There's nothing to hide. Yet, when the message came out from town council that we were going to exercise our authority to transfer the money, and no year-end transfers were required by the Finance Committee, it seemed to spark their outrage in a way that I didn't see coming. I really didn't. That afternoon, town council alerted, and if I may read, if you mind, Mr. Chairman, this was Jay Tallerman's announcement to us, which was shared with the Finance Committee on the ruling of whether or not the town could proceed with the transfers without any further action. Folks, great news from the Department of Revenue. Jay, you don't mind if I read this? It's a public record.
It's your record, and I think I shared it with more than just the board, so it's not confidential.
As you'll recall from the Select Board meeting last night, in my other emails over the last few days, I've been corresponding with legal staff at the Department of Revenue as to whether we can assess the access, excuse me, the extra seventy-five thousand that was placed in the benefit line item directly to pay debt, excuse me, department head salary increases without the need to obtain further town meeting approval or permission for a line item transfer from the Finance Committee. At the request of the Department of Revenue, I provided all materials, budgets, emails, leading up to town meeting, along with my legal opinion. In response, the Department of Revenue stated that such info was helpful, but asked if there was any statements supplied to town meeting that would allow voters to be cognizant of the fact that the additional seventy-five thousand in that line item was purposeful and for the purposes as described. To that end, I supplied DOR with the link to the town meeting video with specific notations to the chairman's, to the Finance Committee's chairman's explanation during his initial presentation. These monies were purposely added to the benefit item for salary purposes and can, excuse me, the Finance Committee chairman's later confirmation during the moderator's discussion of this line item under the motion for approval of the omnibus budget. I also supplied the Finance Committee's meeting minutes from the night of town meeting, wherein the adjustment to the benefits line item was referenced. As a result of all this evidence, and based upon a phone conversation I just had with DOR council, DOR agrees that sufficient evidence has been produced to support my opinion. This line item transfer may be used for the direct payment of the relevant salaries. Nothing could be clearer. We followed the letter. We knew the Department of Revenue needed to look at this. They did. There was no need for an FY '20 transfer. End of story. I think I will refrain from reading the chairman's response to Mr. Tallerman, but I will tell you, it starts with a very emotional response. He is very incensed with town council's opinion that was shared with him. That afternoon, this email was shared with multiple individuals across town government. That evening, the Finance Committee had an agenda that included approval of meeting minutes and line item transfers. This matter was never referred to them for a transfer. It never made their way to them, okay? However, later down in their agenda, they did talk about discussion of warrant articles for the annual town meeting. Now, remember, this is early May, we were still planning a June town meeting. In the event that the transfer was not approved, Mr. Ritter had proposed a draft article and a draft warrant that was shared with the Finance Committee on May 1st, and in the event that we were going to pull off a town meeting in FY '20, that article was going to exercise the transfer. Mr. Tallerman's decision, in his opinion, removed that need. It was no longer needed.
Right.
When the Finance Committee got to article, excuse me, item number five on their agenda, the chair introduced the issue. Mr. Tallerman, you can weigh in if you'd like. I think he has, I think he has the option to bring this conversation in. I found it to be unproductive, given the fact that the item had been removed from discussion. There was no action in FY '20 that was needed by the Finance Committee. Would you concur with that, sir?
Yeah, no, no, there is no longer need for town, town meeting vote. It wasn't even really a transfer that was being approved. It was really just the use of the money as approved by the town meeting from the get-go at last year's town meeting.
What followed over the next fifteen, about the two-hour mark of a two-hour and twenty-minute meeting were some remarks made by several members of the committee. I will not identify them, but I will read some of the remarks for people at home to hear why I felt my reputation, you can speak for your own, Ms. Hyatt can speak for hers, was attacked. I literally had a very visceral reaction listening to some of the charges and comments made, because they're unfounded, and as some citizens have mentioned to me, they're appalling. They're uncalled for. One individual said, "He personally does not like loopholes. He's not implying any impropriety or illegality, but the selectmen should stand behind decisions made." There's a lot of the answers in between that question. I don't know what he meant. But he said he would not try to bury anything. I'm not sure what we buried. One other remark said, "There should be transparency in government," and apparently that is not the plan here. One other person said, "When you are not transparent on one thing, what else are you not transparent on?" on? Another individual said, because the selectmen make a mess. It does not mean that the FinCom needs to come in and clean it up. Another remarked, the solution the selectman found in his mind is a loophole to avoid having a public discussion. Another member mentioned, this issue keeps coming up. It's not us that keeps bringing it up. It's another loophole here that's being done to get around something that we have said multiple times that needs to be brought up to the town. Well, I'd ask right now, how was that going to happen in FY '20? It was always an FY '21 issue, and it will be.
Right.
Two more remarks. One individual said, he would like to know if his elected officials were taking actions and were looking to lawyers to find them ways of getting them out of following the normal course of business, basically looking for ways to continually avoid the debate. In this particular instance, the process that the selectmen followed should raise a lot of red flags. It's important for the town to know what the process occurred. And finally, one individual, Mr. Talaman, one individual said, her problem with the issue is the Town Council was charged with supporting the selectmen, not the town. The rhetoric involved in that meeting greatly bothered me. I had a debate with a member of the committee on this, on a Zoom call several weeks ago. Uh, I found their, their remarks to be completely irresponsible, not connected to an issue that was in play. I think they took some liberty with their agenda. I don't think there's a violation, but I do have a problem with how it all went out. Frankly, if you look at it and you, and you, and you source where that agenda was, Mr. Chairman, and how the chairman of the Finance Committee took an issue that had been reserved, removed earlier from discussion and moved it into a dialogue that resulted in this, this very, very unprofessional dialogue, dare I say, he looks like he took a loophole out of the open meeting law to make it happen. I'm very upset with their remarks. I don't find them constructive. We constantly crave good discourse, open dialogue, transparency. This matter has had a lot of that this year. I cannot wait for town meeting to bring it up. If they want to talk about it, there's more than enough to talk about. We admitted there was an error. We work to solve problems in this town. We do not look to hang other elected officials out there with accusations that are unfounded and attack their character and reputation. Enough is enough.
And John, if I can, I, I'm going to jump in on that and say, that meeting, yes, those, those comments were expressed. They've been expressed elsewhere, and they've been expressed in a public forum on social media that produces responses from residents like, so deceitful to its core, what the Select Board does. This is shady, what the Select Board does. So those comments that you've read, they've also been posted out there on social media for residents to consume, prompting responses from residents that call in, in a social media environment, call into question our integrity and our truthfulness and our willingness and commitment to doing the hard work of running this town with the residents' best interests at hand. So, um, yes, they were made most recently on, on May 5th. They've been made before. Um, in October, Article III prompted a Finance Committee member to call out our poor judgment on financial matters. Um, so this is a, a pattern of behavior, I would say. I would also point out that they've been, um, Town Clerk has addressed this issue with them, I believe. I would, I would characterize the town moderator's response during the October town meeting as concerned by the approach taken, especially in regards to Article III and addressing the, the Select Board. Um, that's my character, characterization only, but I don't believe the Select Board are the only ones who, who have seen that there's an issue here. So I, I agree with John that the tone and the, um, comments, they're, they're, they're not helpful at all. Um, and I believe that they are, yeah, they're, they're damaging to the trust that is critical for us to be able to do our role well. Uh, and I, I don't believe at all they, they foster collaborative, um...
Relationship.
Relationship. Even though collaboration can involve disagreement, this is not healthy disagreement. And to say it is, is a huge mischaracterization.
Mr. Talaman, um, your comments about the social media, um, situation that Tina just brought up, um, you know, questioning our character and so forth.
Well, yeah, you know, again, I, I can only view that, that there's a First Amendment right to do whatever you like. So, it is, from a legal perspective, you know, we get asked a lot about social media. And, you know, people have a right to express themselves. The thing that I get concerned with and that I'm, I try and monitor on behalf of the towns I represent is when there are serial communications through social media by, between a quorum of any particular body. Um, you know, we, we also counsel as to potential liability for libelous statements. Don't get me wrong, that, that, that happens very occasionally. But I get more concerned if I am shown a Facebook thread or a Twitter thread or whatever, and I see, not at the same time, but over the course of a short conversation, a quorum of a board all chiming in, and then, then it becomes a problem, um, from my perspective. I, I do think that towns develop media policies, some of it is enforceable, a lot of it is, you know, civility code. And, you know, we work on this routinely too. They're not particularly enforceable, and they're more useful in the context of appointed officials than elected officials. They do provide a forum for accountability, um, even for elected officials over time. So, you know, that, that's about, I, all I could add on that. I do want to come back briefly to something that John said, just because I want to correct record so everyone understands what my role is on, on anything here. I am Town Council, and I think, in the general sense, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator may lend me out, so to speak, to answer legal questions on behalf of the boards. But first and foremost, I represent the, the Select Board and, uh, and the issues that they bring forward. So to the extent that there was any discrepancy between my loyalties on that particular issue, and I don't really view it that way because I was just trying to find the objective truth, but to the extent that there was any discrepancy on that, then there can be no mistake, and I don't want anyone on any other board, uh, feel that there's a mistake. I represent the Select Board and, uh, the Town Administrator, um, and whoever else they tell me to represent within the community at large.
Jay, I'm just struck. Would, would a reasonable person say that seeking DOR input is a, is a loophole?
Oh, you know, I, I guess, I, I don't want to say I took umbrage for it too, because I, I know that the, the person that used that term was passionate about, about this issue. But I, I never sought a loophole for anything a, at all. We had a, a legal opinion where we, I gave a quick legal opinion when this first came out, and it turned out to be the same legal opinion that we had at the end. We did have a disagreement with DOR on a part of it, and I ceded that point, but I really didn't need that point at the end of the day. The, DOR actually pushed us pretty hard to demonstrate from objective and incontrovertible evidence, statements that people made, emails that people sent, as to exactly what happened from just before the town meeting to at the town meeting. And we presented those facts in an unvarnished way. Here's what this person said in this email. Here's what they said at town meeting, exactly, word for word, pulled right off of the tape. In fact, we sent them the tape, and we felt that was evidence for the premise that DOR stated in their own opinion, not a loophole, but their own application of Massachusetts law that says, if you're dumping money, putting money, appropriate money, transferring into a specific fund, that even if it may not usually be used for that, if it was clear and concise, and that information was available for all voters to question, challenge, or be informed on, then they would support that. I didn't give them a shade of gray, I didn't exclude any evidence, there was no evidence to exclude. So about three or four emails, the minutes of the Finance Committee, the minutes of the Board of Selectmen, and the exact statements of, of the, ultimately, the moderator and the Finance Committee Chairperson. Those statements spoke for themselves. I wasn't putting my words in anyone's mouth, and your Finance Committee Chairperson is a brilliant person who's dedicated to the town. And I, I just gave the facts and gave the actual tape. Um, was little concerned what the later comments seemed to expand on what someone thought he said, or what he thought he said. It's a loophole. It was just the law. That's what lawyers do, the facts to law, and present a position.
And so, in terms of, uh, this idea that we're denying town meeting the ability to understand and approve these department head salaries, they will have that opportunity on July 20th or whenever town meeting for this year will be. They will have that opportunity to see and approve each line item in each budget that has the salary head, uh, excuse me, the department head salary adjustments annualized within it. That opportunity will be presented to the voters at our town meeting, in the omnibus budget that's presented.
Right. And then it becomes a question for the moderator, I think, and we'll have that conversation at town meeting or before town meeting. There's going to be an appropriation on the warrant, obviously, or actually, before that happens, it will be in a 1/12 budget where the moderator doesn't have a, a role. Um, but when it eventually gets to town meeting, there's going to be a budget item. Whether the moderator wants to consider the past, uh, past history in anyone's presentation or options on that article is up to the moderator. As you all know, I'm the moderator, I'm the moderator in, in my town, and I'm not interested in looking backwards, um, on things like that. We are where we are, and we have to vote the budgets that, that are before us. So, to the extent that it ends up before town meeting and someone wants to invite a lengthy talk about past history, that, that'll be up to Bill whether or not he entertains it, especially in a year where we want to keep town meeting as short as possible so that we're not creating, um, an unhealthy environment for Holliston seniors or any other people who might be immunocompromised.
So you haven't seen this Select Board do anything that is denying voters at town meeting the opportunity to have this understood, the, these adjustments to department head salaries? You haven't seen this Select Board take steps to, um, this is the, you're saying this is the moderator's responsibility and, and ability to make this decision on this discussion, not the Select Board's?
I, you know, my, my recollection from last year was that the Select Board was prepared to discuss this issue had questions arose about it. I think, I think John will recall that quite clearly because he was quite tuned into this issue and was prepared to discuss it. I think Jeff probably would've discussed it too because we were in the, in, uh, earlier stages of those negotiations. So to the extent that people wanted a rationale for where, why that $75,000 was set aside for these salaries, which is again, not an unusual practice, even according to DOR, I think that dialogue could've been held. You know, as is often the case, people don't question most line items. And here we're talking about a $75,000 line item, which Ken explained, um, tens of millions of dollars budget. If someone wanted to discuss it because it was flagged once by Ken, a second time by Ken, and by the moderator himself, they could've and they would've. And I'm quite sure that Jeff or John or who, any other member of the Select Board or anyone else or member of the FinCom could've discussed it then. Um, and if there was further discussion that said, no, no, you know, this has to be discussed, uh, at a later town meeting, that, that, that could've been had at that time too. It didn't. No one deprived anyone of anything. All these line items were there to see, including the comparison from year to year, which showed the $75,000 increase in, in that one item.
Okay.
You know, you try and be as, as possible. I read every single line item in the budget at my meeting, and I'm shocked and, when no one questions things that are millions and millions of dollars, and sometimes people glom onto a $50 item. You know, you, you just can't predict where these things are going to happen. But moderator did a great job with the budget. There was plenty of discussion about this particular item. There were emails before town meeting where the selectmen deferred to the FinCom as to where they wanted to put the money. The FinCom Chair made a conscious decision, said, I think we should put it here for now until this issue's resolved. There's emails that indicate that. I'm not in those exact words. The conscious decision to account for that money because you, no one knew exactly which department head salary all the money was going to go into. So it makes common sense. DOR's practice tip is in the future, make a new separate line item or call it something else and, so that it, it's, um, so that you're not involved in the, in the same debate, which is, which is good advice. But at the end of the day, they felt there was enough evidence to support that no one was trying to hide the ball or use a loophole to, uh, save $75,000 from someone, you know, obviously, there are bigger fish to fry with a 30, 40 million dollar budget.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
Um, Jay, one question I had, um, with the vote at, uh, town meeting, there was one of the complaints from the Finance Committee since has been that, uh, they felt it should have been annualized, but again, they, they had plenty of time to, um, suggest that. Um, and they could've got up at town meeting and said, hey, we, we want this annualized. They, they had plenty of opportunities. And then after the fact, then they mentioned, hey, this should've been annualized. But not, not once did they advise us that that's what they wanted. They had so many opportunities.
Well, the, the other thing I'd say, Mark, too, is that earlier in the meeting, you had discussed and approved a new personnel bylaw. And that bylaw specifically left in the hands of the, of the chief executives of the town the negotiation of these items. The job of town meeting is to provide enough money to fulfill those responsibilities of the Select Board that happen in between town meetings, I suppose. But there's no question as to the ultimate authority to decide on what those salaries would be, subject to appropriation. And all town meeting was doing is saying, hey, we just passed a bylaw trusting the Board of Selectmen to take care of these salaries. Let's make sure that there's enough money to fund them. We trust that they're going to do a good job and, and fund these salaries. That's not really that unusual because you don't negotiate things necessarily so that they're always neatly tied up...
Right.
...by your annualizing. So, ultimately...
And the appropriation was for 2020, so, um, in our mind, of course, you're going to, from there on in, annualize it, as you would anybody.
Right.
As, as you would anyone's salary, right? So, I mean, I just don't, I just don't understand, uh, the rhetoric.
You know, I think we're, we can all be guilty at one time or another of, of getting inured to principle on, on an issue that, where the issue be, the, the principle behind it becomes more important than the underlying thing, and you, you got to breathe and have a little introspection and move on. This, this might be one of those things. Again, I, I credit your Finance Committee, especially its chair, as being smart and passionate about what they do, and, and their, their efforts are generally channeled for a good purpose. Um, you know, I know we're talking a little bit about tone. I, I don't want to say it's all bad because I, I wish that all towns had a Finance Committee, including especially your chair, who cared as much and spent as much time as they did in their volunteer capacity on trying to get things right.
Right.
Are, are we all guilty sometimes of getting too wrapped up in things? I suppose, but, as, as I think John has indicated and Tina as well, there, there's a time to move on and just, let's get to the next issue and let's, let's remain friends and, and coworkers and, and try and get to the next job we got to do for the town.
Absolutely. I agree with you. John, you had a question?
No, I, I would agree, Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Talaman's remarks. Um, you know, the process of getting here and leading into town meeting involved a You know, the process of getting here and leading into Town Meeting involved a lot of dialogue. We stated back in October that the impact of the annualized value was an issue, and that we wanted to work towards the solution. It was a problem. It was not a huge problem. We admitted that. It's very clear. We're not running away from that at all. But I want to reinforce, because, you know, I've served in this town now for over 20 years. I work in public management. I firmly believe in problem solving. Going forward, all this is about, and we have a job to do. The Select Board, we have an oath. We have bylaws to conduct our business. We've done that legally, thoroughly, transparently. And for any suggestion to be made that that has not occurred, I have to draw the line. I embrace Mr. Talaman's notion that passion for doing something is good, and I would share his remarks, especially about the Chair of the Finance Committee, who I also admire. But in this case, I believe he erred. He erred by opening this issue to a debate that got out of hand in a way that I found, to borrow a phrase from a citizen, appalling. I would never say these things about elected officials.
No.
It's out of line. And I am appealing to all of them tonight. Please stop. Solve the problems. Stop the finger pointing. Have the debate at Town Meeting. Please, I want it. But stop this. Stop suggesting we are not transparent, that we're hiding things, that we lawyer up, that we look for loopholes. I'm hoping all of them wish they could take it back. We haven't heard too much from them about it. But tonight, I'm grateful for the opportunity to express my opinion about this in open session. I think Mr. Talaman did a phenomenal job, a measured job, a professional job, helping us navigate this matter this fiscal year. There's been no attempt to hide anything, honest to God. And citizens at home have to understand the work that we do. I'm very proud of it and the work that each of my colleagues here do tonight. You're exceptional volunteers. The town is lucky to have us in many ways. And looking forward to Town Meeting, nothing to hide. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I see some members of the Finance Committee on the call tonight. If you're ready to invite them in for any comments, I'd love to hear any. It's an open meeting.
Absolutely. Anyone from...
If there are any.
Ben, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Alfred. I'd like to speak.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'd actually just like to start the, there's so many points and so many things, and it's great that you guys have gone on for half an hour, you know, with your sort of very one-sided thing, and we can get into that in a minute. But Jay, I have a question for you. In your legal opinion, the posting tonight, and let me just find it, was for, item number four, was an open meeting law violation involving the Finance Committee on May 5. Is that not defamatory? You know, presuming essentially that there was a violation before we even had this conversation? No alleged, no, you know, potential, no, you know, any sort of, you know, language that, you know, would illustrate to the public that this is not a decided fact, that we're not, you know, discussing an actual open meeting law violation?
I'm not sure what your question is.
My question is, is that not defamatory? It is essentially assuming guilt before being proven, you know, guilty. It is, the language is wholly objectionable.
I wouldn't use the term "defamatory" in any way, shape, or form. I think that...
I wouldn't.
You know, I think that, well, I mean, that term has legal significance, and I just don't think the discussion rises to that level. I can understand why some might not be happy with the comments made, just as others might not be happy with the comments made at that FinCom meeting. But that may get defamation. There's specific legal requirements that I don't think this meets.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that. So, I mean, I'm troubled here because, so the question was asked to the council, whether he viewed this as an open meeting law violation. Within the first couple of minutes, he essentially said that, you know, while there were some things that, you know, he would caution us against, you know, doing, that in his opinion, there was no actual sort of violation. And then we spent the next, you know, 30 minutes on what I would consider to be pretty much a political hit job, and why I assume that this is on the agenda, to rehash everything that happened that you take grievance with for the Finance Committee, to essentially try to apparently, you know, air all of your disagreements with us and just sort of get them out there and make sure that you took as many hits on us as possible, while at the same time sort of grieving about all of the hits that apparently we have, you know, thrown at you folks. So, but I would like to start by saying, John, you're factually incorrect with your numbers as far as the $75,000 and the amount of the managerial salary adjustments that were presented to us for fiscal year 2020. Originally, that number, when we had it and before, you know, it was sort of being discussed going to Town Meeting, originally, that number, and let me bring it up just for you, was And granted, $3,500, not huge money, but you are factually incorrect that the number that was originally presented was under that. Now, I understand that there were some things that happened, and the mess, which I referred to when you removed Article 1 from the October Town Meeting, sort of helped you with this because the town clerk could not receive her salary adjustment then. So obviously, you then dropped below the $75,000. But the intent of the Select Board was to actually outspend the dollar amount that Town Meeting had allocated for these needs, regardless of whether we look at the annual number or not, which in my opinion is actually what the Town Meeting, what certainly the Finance Committee was looking at. And oh, by the way, I mean, all of these issues that you're now having, now no one could see the pandemic coming, but all these issues that you are having with all these budgets are largely a result of the fact that you need to make these adjustments to the managerial salaries. But let's just take a step back here for a second. We are in the midst of a global pandemic. We are in the midst of one of the greatest economic recessions, depressions, perhaps in this country's history, and certainly since the Great Depression. And you have decided to use, you know, 30, 45 minutes of your time to basically take a subject, an open meeting law violation, to task against us because you objected and were hurt by some words that we said at a meeting of ours. And, you know, look, we can all disagree. We, you know, we use, you know, different languages and stuff. I do believe that the Select Board has made a number of actions that I find to be questionable and objectionable, and created a significant mess, and I certainly stand by those. I also believe that this is a 2020 issue because these salaries are being paid in 2020, and your intent was to outspend the dollar amount that Town Meeting had even allocated. And just because of some of the mess that was caused, you didn't have to act, you didn't end up needing all of that money. But that wasn't, you know, that wasn't your intent originally. So, we're in the middle of this pandemic, and you guys have put aside 45 minutes, which, by the way, Mr. Talaman, I would actually like to get your opinion on this because this is not actually what the art, what the item on the agenda is about, right? You guys went on and talked about this whole managerial salary discussion for 30 minutes, which I would call to be a substantial and substantive debate, which had actually nothing to do with the open meeting law violation. It was simply the Select Board defending themselves and their actions. If what we did was on the line of, you know, borderline and sort of questionable, I would say that the exact same, you know, issue should pertain to this. Furthermore, I would like to discuss the fact that there was a five-minute recess in which you could hear Ms. Hein and Mr. Cronin debating something before the mics were turned off. That in no way is appropriate because that is akin to kicking people out of a room during an open, open meeting, when neither it was adjourned nor re, you know, brought back into session. Furthermore, a number of other items were debated tonight that were not on their agenda specifically, number of budgets that were not on their agenda specifically. My point is that you can look at everything anybody does and find some things that, you know, maybe, you know, aren't ideally possible. And I'm certainly not going to then go and put on my, you know, the Finance Committee agenda, charges, official charges brought by the executive board. Now, this is not an individual, you know, Mr. Cronin or Mr. Ronin or Ms. Hein acting individually to file it. This is something that they have brought to the Select Board meeting. They're meeting three times this week to go over budgets so that we can get through this crisis. And they have devoted this amount of time to a political hit job. This, this, this is appalling. And they want to work together. They want to say, how do we get over this? How do we deal with this? And they put on their agenda open meeting law violation by the Finance Committee? Give me a break. What are you guys trying to do?
Okay, I'm going to let Jay answer some of the questions, as you've been rambling on for a while, and he hasn't had a chance to answer any of your questions.
I take that back, Mr. Chair. He rambles far more than I do.
So, go ahead, Jay.
I'm not really going to answer from a legal perspective too much. I assume that, and I think this was coming, that the board should come full circle and make a motion and vote on a motion not to pursue an open meeting law complaint after kind of getting through the four corners of it. So, I'll leave that one alone. I'm not going to examine, I don't have the agenda in front of me. The rest of this stuff, I'm really not, I'm not going to revisit all of those accusations. I understand the hurt feelings and all that. And again, I went to great lengths to not make value judgments on anything, trying to be an arbiter of the facts. The only thing I'd say is, let's all, when this is all over, let's talk about open meeting law. Let's have a group session on it, do it at Town Meeting. I think the last time I did it, there was like eight or 10 people that showed up. Let's make it more robust next time. We all know what we're doing, but on that, I didn't, I don't think there's a lot for me to respond to at Town Council there.
John?
In response to Mr. Alfred's remarks, I guess, the, I don't know if folks can see that, that is an open meeting law violation form, which has been completed and filled out prior to this meeting. The research to look into the potential violation of an open meeting law by the Finance Committee began on May 9, excuse me, when contact was made with Town Council and the town clerk to evaluate the Finance Committee's actions on this item, at this portion of their meeting. That is why the item is on our agenda. This evening, we're examining whether or not, as a result of what we know, it meets the test of being an open meeting law violation. I found out very recently that there was a May 1 warrant that was submitted to the Finance Committee in preparation of their May 5 meeting that evening. Was not aware they had that. It's not something I track. Absent that document, I would sign this form tonight and fulfill my obligation of filing an open meeting law violation. That warrant, in its draft form, contained Article 7 that had information about this issue. Up until a couple of days ago, I was very willing to sign the form, Mr. Alfred, and file the complaint with the Attorney General's Office and the town clerk and your chairman. So we had to post this a couple of days ago, as you know. That's the genesis of why it says on the agenda, a violation of the Finance Committee. We're here to discuss it. We've come into information since that time that, to my thinking, and apparently to Town Council, seems to exonerate your committee from the use of the posting for that agenda item and the discussion that occurred that night. I'm an elected official, Mr. Alfred. You are as well. We had our words a couple of weeks ago. I was unimpressed with your understanding of the FY '20 budget process and why you felt aggrieved by the actions that this board has taken. I remain unimpressed tonight by your inability, as an elected official, to understand what we're trying to do, is to collaborate with other boards, be open, be transparent, and solve problems. I'm committed to that. Your rhetoric tonight doesn't convince me you are. You have to be elected every three years. We'll see how that goes for you. But honestly, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in your colleagues and the comments they made against this item. But trust me, if that warrant article wasn't given to you on May 1, I'd be signing this document tonight, and you'd be found in violation. That's why we're talking about it.
You had a couple of days to take this off of your agenda for tonight, and you didn't do it, and therefore, that is why this whole conversation is nothing more than a political hit job, and I'm disappointed.
Call it what you want, Dan. Listen, I find your remarks on this to be completely outside the bounds of civil discourse. I'm going to disconnect from having a conversation with you about it because I really don't think you understand the issue. You've repeatedly made incendiary comments about people. You use the word "mess." You want to stand by it. I can't wait for you to describe what that means. You actually said in a meeting, I'm not signing those transfers. If people don't get paid, let the Select Board figure it out. I didn't get elected to have these kind of arguments with other officials. I will not have any more with you. I find them to be unproductive and, at this point, completely inappropriate. So enjoy the rest of your evening, Mr. Alfred.
Mr. Sparrow, did you want to make some comments? I see that you're on the board.
Hi. Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I, you know, I want to move on from this. I'm done talking about this. I don't like talking about this. I feel like we're spending too much time and too much oxygen on this when there's a lot more important things to talk about. I do want to mention to council, a couple months ago, everything's sort of a blur at this point in terms of timing, but the town clerk held a great seminar on open meeting law that I attended at the top of Town Hall before we closed it for meetings up there. I want to say it was January sometime up in that neighborhood, but I don't have it in front of me. And that was a great meeting. You know, there might be a necessity for refresher, but I do find that what the town clerk did was excellent and did give a lot of information about the structure and the nature of the open meeting law. But I don't really have much else to say here because I just don't really want to give this any more time. I want to move on. I want to talk about real, the issues of Town Meeting, the 112 budget. I think there's important things that we need to discuss, and I don't want to talk about this anymore. So, that's all I'm going to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right, we will move on with the agenda with some board business. Meeting minutes of May 11. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 11, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Parade permit application for, I believe, the high school. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
And do you have a little more information on this, please?
There's going to be an event held on June 7. This is in recognition of the Holliston High School graduation for 2020. There'll be a parade throughout town. The police chief has reviewed the application. Again, it's going to be held on Sunday, June 7, the Holliston High School Senior Car Parade.
Okay. And they feel as though it can be done in a safe way.
Yes, yep.
So, if I can just read, just because I know there's probably an active group listening out there for the details, it starts at 1:00 P.M. The estimated duration's an hour on June 7, and one senior per vehicle is what they're saying. So, vehicles, sorry, vehicles, one per, one senior student in a vehicle, I think, is what it's saying here. But more details are to come, including the exact parade route. So, a motion to approve the parade permit for the Holliston High School Senior Car Parade, scheduled to take place Sunday, June 7, 2020, at 1:00 P.M., beginning at the Woodland Street Campus and ending approximately an hour later at the Holliston High School, with, again, the exact parade route and some smaller details to follow. That is my motion.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Review of annual Town Meeting warrant.
I have no updates for you this evening.
Any comments or questions about the warrant? Anyone have? We've been...
Do you intend to keep that as an agenda item going forward at this point?
Absolutely, yep.
Despite the fact that we have ample time to tackle this in anticipation of the July...
You never know what's going to come up, right?
I got to keep it in front of you because we need a final product.
Very good.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
So, the comments then, James is on the call, he was on the call. Will we, should we expect to see the capital request for the wastewater treatment plant change? You mentioned that Mr. Keast is involved in reviewing everything.
Yeah, no, that number, I think it's around $40,000 or $53,000 or something like that.
Okay, all right, that's all.
Okay, year-end in reserve fund transfers?
Nothing.
We don't have anything, right? We don't have anything, right?
Nope.
Okay. Any other business? Tina?
I have no other business at all.
Really? I'm surprised.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I believe we've concluded the review of 112 budgets. Is that correct, Mr. Ritter?
Yeah, I think so.
We've, we've made a lot of decisions and the material has to be collected and assembled into a single document. With your permission, I'd like to collaborate with the town accountant to achieve what I think will be a one-page presentation of that information.
For the finance committee review?
Well, first, we have to vote on it. Well, we voted on each item, but I think we should collectively look at and
Vote on the whole thing.
And affirm each of the lines.
And we could do that next Monday?
As early as Monday. I don't know if Sharon can turn around quickly.
And then it could go right to the finance committee?
Right. Seemingly, we could then convey it to them for their, for their advice and consultation. So as far as I'm concerned, we are, in the event we need to clean up anything, we can talk about it Monday, too. Just FYI in terms of where we're heading.
Can I just ask, sorry, make a comment about?
Yes.
Okay. John, do you anticipate that items like the county retirement and debt service celebrations, are those things that we'll talk about more, do you think? Or you'll do the work, prepare the report, and we'll vote on the report? I should not expect to be hearing any discussion.
I don't think so. No, those are, I think Sharon indicated that some of those, I think, if I recall correctly, almost all of those are one-time payments that get, be made upfront. They're obligations.
Okay. And Sharon will also be presenting with Chief Cassidy, or Chief Cassie will be presenting on behalf of Sharon, the report that we will be looking for to prepare for June 5th filing of the
CARES Act.
CARES Act.
On the agenda.
Okay. Great. That's a lot of work, Sharon. Thank you for doing all that.
All right. And I guess that's it, unless anybody else has any other business. Okay. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 9:11 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for listening in. And have a nice evening and we'll see you next Monday night. Bye-bye.
Thank you.